All right, good afternoon, everyone. We're going to begin today's policy session of the Phoenix City Council for September 22, 2015. We're going to begin today's meeting with any council information or follow-up requests, and I'll turn to the council and see if there are any pieces of information or follow-up requests you'd like to make for the public or ask of management. Councilman Gates, you want to start? Are you okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. We've got several events coming up in District III we want to let everyone know about this Saturday. On September 26th, we'll be having the annual Moon Valley Grasshopper Bridge 5K Race. That's always a lot of fun. I always have a big turnout for that community event. We'll be benefiting Phoenix Children's Hospital, along with several other very worthy groups. Also, proud to be involved in a fundraiser event next Monday, September 28. And this is for the Desert Horizon has established a bike squad recently in Sunny Slope. It's been very popular and very successful, and so a few of us are putting on a little fundraiser at the Spoken Wheel on Central to raise some funds for the maintenance and for the bike maintenance and additional equipment for them. If you are interested in that, please call our office at (602) 262-7441. We also have the Sunny Slope Art Walk coming up on October 10th. That's Saturday, October 10th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's always a lot of fun, and encourage you all to come up and see all of the wonderful art and musicians in Sunny Slope. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Councilman Lambs?
Thank you, Mayor. Saturday, the 26th, Metro Center by Sears is the National Preparedness Month Emergency Preparedness Expo. You can get free first aid kits, bike helmets, smoke detectors, and car seats. The following Saturday at Metro is the GAIN kickoff at 10:00 a.m., so everyone is invited. This Saturday night, I believe, is the fundraising dinner for the Phoenix Public Library, Dinner in the Stacks. You are invited. Tickets, I think, are still available. You can go online and find those. And then every Saturday in October, the Pioneer Living History Museum is having a huge family Oktoberfest. Everyone is invited from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and I encourage you to go. It's great fun, punkin patches, thrills, scary things, and creatures in the night. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Pastor?
Yes, I want to congratulate the Business and Professional Women's Club of Phoenix, who will be celebrating its 100th anniversary on Saturday, and I look forward to joining a team of amazing women to celebrate the anniversary of the foundation dedicated to further advancing working women through research, education, and scholarship. So on the topic of anniversaries, I want to highlight the Phoenix Arts and Cultures 30 Years Celebration, taking place on Saturday, October 3rd, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Phoenix Convention Center and Herberger Theater. So I hope everybody comes out and joins us in the celebration of music, dance, theater, and art. And it's free, so I'm looking forward to seeing everybody. On Saturday, October 3rd, we also are kicking off the GAIN event, so hope to see everybody at Metro Center. And on Friday is the Hispanic -- Thursday and Friday is the Hispanic Women's Corporation Conference. So anybody that would like to join us, we're all there. It seems to be a Woman Week. And then on Saturday, Dinner in the Stacks. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Speaking of incredible women, I'd like to introduce Eva Masadiego, who is here with us. She's -- this is her second day. And Eva, will you please stand so that -- so Eva Masadiego joins our team. Her previous capacity, Eva was a fourth and fifth grade schoolteacher. And so another person in our office that's incredibly passionate about the community and education. She joins two other incredible women, Fanny Gavada and Mallory Hutchinson. And we just have a -- we have a great team, and I'm certainly blessed. So thanks for joining us, Eva. She's already doing such a great job. The Hive at Central next week, Fuerza Local and The Hive will be having an event at the Burton Bar Library with 80 local business owners. Many of these business owners actually receive the mentorship and the training for free there at The Hive. It's all part of the larger entrepreneurial ecosystem that we're helping to create right here in Phoenix. I want to thank Kimber Lanning from Local First for the opportunity to have us join and for everything that Kimber and Local First and Fuerza Local does for the small business, that entire thriving community. Speaking of entrepreneurs, Allbound has a ping pong challenge. Mayor, I hear you're not too bad at ping pong. And so next Thursday at 4:00 p.m., October 1st, right here in downtown, it's the Yes PHX Entrepreneurial Ecosystem is coming together to support Allbound. It's going to be a lot of fun just to watch a little ping pong and the networking that goes on with this ecosystem. It's always a lot of fun. It's very impressive, and all are welcome. I want to congratulate our Phoenix Police Department, my colleagues on the council, Mayor, you, our city manager. We had a couple of really big wins, and one that I will speak of is the announcement yesterday, which is the COPS grant. It's incredibly important, you know, just a few years ago, the city was in this position of having a hiring freeze. We weren't going to be able to hire a police officer for several years. A few months ago, we adopted a budget that will allow us to hire 110 police officers, 95 firefighters. Of course, that trend and that expectation will continue for the next few years. In total, because of funding freed up through Proposition 104, an additional 125 police officers serve while on our way. But before we got there, we started working with the Department of Justice, their COPS Office there in DC, making those, you know, those meetings early and often by several of us here. And a few -- three years ago, we were awarded the largest COPS grant in the nation that year, which allowed us to hire 15 police officers. And just yesterday, another announcement for -- it's a $3.1 million COPS grant. It's the second COPS grant in just three years. And of course, that adds to the plans for the already, you know, well, I'm sorry, that'll add to the plans to hire more than 400 police officers in the next, you know, three years or so. So another big win for the people of Phoenix. It was said, and it continues to be said, that public safety is the number-one priority of government, number-one priority of local government. You know, this demonstrates, this is not just, these aren't just wards. The city of Phoenix is demonstrating that public safety is the number-one priority here in Phoenix, and that's a big deal, not only to the people that police officers serve, but certainly to our police officers. Safety of our first responders is paramount, so that's a big deal for all of us. And there was another big announcement that was made, but I'm going to go ahead and reserve that for the mayor or the chair of our Public Safety Subcommittee. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Vice Mayor, and thanks for pushing us. You know, from day one, you've been on council, you've pushed the city to apply for those COPS grants, and they're matching grants, so it's, there is some city dollars involved when we have to be committed to public safety. And thank you for your leadership on it, and that reward that we received, the highest in the United States of America. Councilman Warren is going to take a pass for now. He reserves the right to come back if he'd like. Councilman Gago?
Fabulous. So this week, Sunday, Arizona Republic recognized the area around Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport as the epicenter of local restaurant innovation for the past year and a half. So very exciting news, and encourage everyone to dine out in District 8 and enjoy some innovative food. But today, I have the pleasure of continuing a tradition my predecessor started with Friends of District 8 Awards, and I'm going to read two sets of awards and then ask the folks who we are recognizing to step forward and see if Mayor Stanton might join me in presenting those after I've recognized them. I am not loud enough to recognize individuals without the microphone, so I will benefit from that. So at that epicenter of food innovation is also Gateway Community College, and they have been a wonderful partner for us. We did our first-ever Community Connections Refugee Town Hall, and we want to thank Kristin so much for hosting us with perhaps the most logistically difficult event we have had and just continued service to the refugee community and our diverse Gateway community, which has so many needs and is so lucky to have Gateway there to step up from high school all the way through career readiness. And we also have the pleasure of being joined by Dr. Stephen Gonzalez. And we have a very ambitious bioscience strategy at the city of Phoenix. We're investing a lot on the land use side, on bioscience campus, and perhaps we give a lot of attention to the PhD jobs at the top, but the real people who power these bioscience economic engines are people without PhDs, and Gateway has really stepped up because we have wonderful workforce and great jobs, but they need training to be able to meet the needs of the future workforce. And our economic development folks and the city council are so grateful to Gateway for being a great partner with us and preparing our workforce for those jobs. So thank you to Gateway. And then our second set is the Community Prosecution Bureau, represented today by Jessica Breedlove, and they have been a wonderful partner for us as we work to fight blight and clean up slum properties and represent the city of Phoenix before the State Liquor Board, where Jessica had a very successful record. So we want to thank you with limited resources for stepping up for our community, and we are very glad to have you as a partner. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and let's give the awards.
And first of all, I'd like to thank the police officers, firefighters, street departments, and all those individuals that helped us out during the storms that we had last month. I mean, it was really a Team Phoenix approach in making sure that our families, our streets were cleared, and just really want to thank you all for your help and generosity. Also, I'd like to invite all those block watchers to really get involved in our GAIN events. We're kicking it off on October 17th. It's really, really important that all these neighborhoods come together, and we just celebrate our block watch at Metro Center on October 3rd. So if you can come on down and be a part of that, that'd be awesome, and get together with your neighbors. It's so important that neighbors get to know their neighbors and they take back their neighborhoods. Also, I'd like to have you all mark down on your calendar, October 30th, we're having a big Halloween movie out there in South Phoenix on Seventh Avenue and Rosier at J.R. Davison Elementary School. We're going to have contests, so the kids are going to dress up, and we're going to give out prizes. We're going to have punkens out there that kids can go out there and carve their punkens and all kinds of contests and activities for the family, food, music, games. So come on down, make sure your kids dress up so they can win some great prizes out there. Also, next month, we're going to be at Sierra Vista, right off of Broadway and 75th Avenue, with a movie in the park. The movies in the park are great opportunities for neighbors to really get to know each other and kids to get to know who their, the kids in their neighborhoods are. So once you come down to a movie in the park, it's a great opportunity to start that conversation and to start a neighborhood association within your own community. And if you need more information about these events and other things, you can contact my office or look us up on our website. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman DeCiccia?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I've got a few things here. One, since this seems to be the police day, one, there is going to be, we need volunteers. The Phoenix Law Enforcement Association is doing a benefit for Officer Gardner. He was shot on September 16th. His family needs some help, and they're doing a barbecue from 11 to 7 on, let's see, it is September 24th, 11 to 7, and we're looking for volunteers to see if there are anyone that would like to volunteer at that event. They need people to serve food, be able to maybe even entertain people that are there, but just, they need some volunteers at this event. And if they can call my office at (602) 262-7491, we'll direct them to the right individual. The other is, I've got three other events that occurred. One happened, it was at Spectrum Video and Film. I don't know if you've had a chance to do that. We're visiting businesses in our community and our district, you know, talking to them, seeing what, how they see the world that's going on, whether or not they see the economy improving. Most businesses right now are starting to see an improvement in the economy, at least from their aspect of it, and one of them was the Spectrum Video and Film. They're one of the largest out there, and it's right on Morton Avenue. It's a great company, great studio, and it's one of the top studios in the valley, and they're starting to actually hire people now. They're seeing more business come their way from convention types of business and from other types of businesses that need these big setups for their presentations. The other, and I think the mayor and I are going to be going there, it's the Arcadia Community Meeting. It's going to be Tuesday, September 29th, at 6:00 p.m. at Ingleside Middle School, 5402 East Osborne Road. Encourage people to come to that. I think they're expecting to have several hundred people at that event. I think we're going to be talking a little bit about the Rite House there, too, but I think that'll be just one of the topics that'll be in there. Don't want to get into too much detail and break the open meeting law, talking about a subject, so I don't want to do that, but that will be one of the things that'll be coming up. We may want to notice that. Just kidding. But the other is, and I'm really proud to be invited to go to this, the Madison Simus Groundbreaking Celebration. We were real involved in that, and city staff did a phenomenal job in helping Simus Elementary. They did a major rebuild starting in 2015. That was their first phase, and then their second phase is going to start in 2016, but they're going through some significant work there. Every issue that we've had with the neighborhood, the school district was phenomenal, they addressed it very quickly. There were some after-hours, you know, construction that was occurring, and obviously, staff did a fantastic job on that, of working with them. So I'm going to be real proud of being involved in that. That's going to be September 30th at 8:15 a.m., and the address is 7302 North 10th Street. Again, if anybody needs any information on this, they can either send us an email on any of these events. It'd be great if we could get some volunteers out there in our community to help the police officer, especially Eric Gardner and his family. But again, my phone number is (602) 262-7491. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I think what Vice Mayor and Councilman O'Callaghan alluded to is that this was a great week for the Phoenix Police Department. They are, as we all know, one of, if not the, best departments in the country, and when it comes to competitive grants, do very, very well. And this week, I think, is just about the best in my experience here at the city, where so many very positive things have happened. The grant allowing for the hiring of 25 more police officers, the COPS grants, the highest in the country, a grant of close to $700,000 to allow for 150 estimated body cameras to be utilized throughout the city and for ASU to partner with the department to study the effectiveness of it, so make sure we deploy it the most effective way possible. Significant grant awards to help with study, a review of DNA, so the DNA case, not just from homicide cases but from property crime cases, can be reviewed more quickly. Resources for Internet crimes against children's task force, and a significant grant to help our police officers get much more involved in business crimes, intellectual property theft, which hurts so many small businesses around our city. And now they'll be able to prioritize that in the appropriate way. So a great day for Phoenix PD, and we really appreciate Chief Yonner, his entire command staff, and of course, most importantly, the rank-and-file officers for doing such a great job. That's why they did well in this competitive grant process. I also want to mention that October 30th is going to be a pretty exciting day here in the city of Phoenix. Councilwoman Pastor chairs a committee with many leaders on the issue of opportunity youth. Young people ages 16 to 24 that currently are not enrolled in school or currently not employed, and we, and this city doesn't give up on any person. Those students, those young people, need to get back on a path, a positive path, either back into school, job training, or into employment. And our partnership with Starbucks is paying huge dividends. At Starbucks, they've done it once in the country, in the city of Chicago, they're coming to the city of Phoenix. They're going to be 30 of the largest employers in the United States of America, combined with local employers, and they're going to hire a lot of young people on that day. It's going to be one of the largest job fairs in the history of the city of Phoenix, focused exclusively on that opportunity youth cohort, ages 16 to 24. So pay close attention to that, because if someone is watching, if you have a family member or you have a family friend, someone that is in that age cohort is not, is not on a positive path right now, we're going to bring them back in, and the opportunity to have companies invest in them, give an employment opportunity, that's going to, people's lives will be changed in a very positive way because of the opportunity youth job fair that's going to occur on the 30th. And that's just one thing. That's a moment in time, it's going to be a great moment. Councilwoman Pastor is leading the committee that is going to come up with some even more long-term solutions to the issue of opportunity youth in our community. So thanks for your leadership on that. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have no consent agenda today. I think there was one, but now it's going to be on next week's agenda. Call for an executive session?
Mayor, in accordance with the, with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes Section 38-431-02, I'm sorry, .02.A meet in executive session on Tuesday, October 13th, 2015, at noon in the East Conference Room, 12th floor, Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
Motion, do we have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. The city manager, do you have any updates or budget updates, reports?
Mayor, we have a budget item later on the agenda, so we'll go straight to the other business.
Item number two on our agenda is a report, and to get people informed about what's going to be happening in the very near future, which is, once again, our Paint Phoenix Purple Domestic Violence Awareness Campaign. We went big on this last year. We're going to go even bigger this year, and we wanted to give the council and the community a chance to hear what we are doing with the Paint Phoenix Purple campaign. Ms. Janovich, our deputy city manager, good to see you. You're our leader on this issue.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Deanna Janovich, deputy city manager. It's a pleasure to be here today to provide you an update to our Domestic Violence Roadmap to Excellence. Joining me at the table today is Ally Bones, Executive Director of the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence, Mo Giegels, our Human Services Director, Mr. Tom Manos, Maricopa County Manager, and John Rader with the Governor's Office of Youth, Faith, and Family.
Purple bow tie, by the way, that's pretty nice. Yeah, that's a good touch.
Thank you, Mayor.
Just to provide you some quick background, Mayor and council, you approved the Roadmap to Excellence in the spring of 2013 with the intent of creating a plan that would make the city of Phoenix a national leader in preventing and ending domestic violence. In order for the city to accomplish this large goal, we really needed to make sure that we had strong collaborative and community-wide approaches to our efforts, as well as being innovative and comprehensive, which would ultimately result in a culture change in our community. The plan really identifies five key areas that the collaboration chose to focus on, and so we're going to talk today about those five areas. The first area is Phoenix as a model, and as a strong partner leading this effort with the community, we really needed to demonstrate our leadership by adopting some best practices in city operations. So just to provide a few examples, we did update our internal policies to include right-to-leve work for victims, which aligns it with the Arizona Revised Statute 13-4439. Another example of our efforts is, we did do a complete review of our City of Phoenix Employee Manual and included additional information about domestic violence and appropriate workplace response. As a result of that review, we developed a Domestic Violence Resource Manual for employers. I believe each of you have in front of you a packet with some of the information that we've developed. This creation of the DV Resource Manual for employers was distributed to many of our partners throughout the city of Phoenix, again, to make sure that employers have information about domestic violence and appropriate workplace response. I'm now going to turn it over to Ally to speak to the area of systems reform and coordinated services, and then Mr. Giegels will talk about our youth and education efforts, as well as community awareness and partnerships.
Thank you, Deanna. Oh, hello, can you hear me? Okay. So the goal of the Systems Reform Committee is to adopt best practices in all city and state policies and services. One of our biggest projects has been the development of an Order Protection Service project. The goal of this project was to remove victims from harm's way in service of orders of protection. This required a strong and unprecedented coordination between Phoenix Police, the courts, the sheriff's office, and the Family Advocacy Center. The project has been successful in removing victims from harm's way in serving orders of protection, and we're very proud of that. And we continue to evaluate the effectiveness and improve processes so that more victims take advantage of the process, so that we can continue to see successful service of orders. The great thing about this project is that it has greatly increased the level of victim advocacy that's being provided to all victims who are seeking orders of protection through the courts. And one thing I wanted to share was a story of a successful service that has occurred. We had a plaintiff that came in who had significant medical challenges plus safety concerns, and the Order Protection Coordinator was able to arrange for off-site service in collaboration with the City of Phoenix Municipal Court Staff and her assisted living facility social worker. Attempts for service proved challenging due to the defendant not answering his door and/or leaving the residence prior to police arrival. After two failed attempts, the service coordinator was able to initiate additional service attempt, and the defendant was served on that attempt. The OP coordinator is currently in communication with APS and St. Joseph's Hospital's social worker regarding the next phase of the order protection process, which will require special accommodations. Without this pilot project, without this project, this plaintiff faced a daunting challenge in her attempt to get and serve the order of protection. So this is just a great thing that we've been able to do. Because of the strong partnerships and collaboration that have been created through the work of the Systems Reform Committee and the OP pilot, or the OP project, we have had the opportunity to apply for grants to further our roadmap efforts. So thank you very much for recently approving the submittal of two grants to the Office on Violence Against Women, and if successful, these grants would increase our victim advocacy efforts and expand the work we're doing with the Order Protection Services Project. Regardless of our success with these applications, though, we have established great relationships and will continue to partner with entities such as the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission to help develop business rules to implement electronic transfer of protective orders and services statewide. So we've just continued to grow these partnerships. Moving on to coordinated service delivery, the goal here was to strengthen, coordinate, and improve access to services for victims. Thank you to your leadership that provided the opportunity for the domestic violence community to come together in an unprecedented way to better serve victims of domestic violence. The mobile housing specialist is working hand-in-hand with programs to assist victims with achieving their housing goals. And centralized screening continues to expand its scope and ability to meet the needs of victims. We have seen unprecedented levels of collaboration between the providers in the community. Attendance at our provider meetings is at an all-time high. I recently ran out of agendas at the last meeting because we've had so many people attending, and it's just wonderful to see all of the providers engaging with one another and working together to better meet the needs of victims in our community. So we now have all of the domestic violence emergency shelters in Maricopa County participating in centralized screening, which is a huge success of this project. I want to share another success story from centralized screening. They received a call from a woman who reported that she was seeking shelter with her teenagers because her boyfriend had always had been verbally and mentally abusive towards her. The abuse became so unbearable that she attempted to harm herself. She indicated she was calling from an inpatient facility where she had completed an evaluation and recovery. Centralized screening was able to work with her case manager upon her discharge to get her placed in the DV Stop program as there was no shelter space available. DV Stop worked with her to get her children back with her and to get transportation arranged to the hotel. While within DV Stop, centralized screening was able to work with her advocates to get her into a shelter in the Phoenix area when space became her into a shelter in the Phoenix area when space became available, which was just within a day or two. As they exited the shelter, they expressed how grateful they were for the help that they received and were excited about their fresh start. Currently, we are formalizing additional processes that will allow us to refer victims that call the hotline to community-based services, which is in addition to what they're doing right now, which is connecting folks with residential services. And it will be awesome for victims to be able to get more direct referrals to those. And for the upcoming year, we're going to work on a process that will assess victims' housing needs so that we can incorporate issues related to trauma, long-term safety, and financial security. And this will give us more information as well about the continuum of housing options that are needed for victims of domestic violence in our community. If this is completed and we are able to accomplish this, Maricopa County will be the first jurisdiction in the country in which domestic violence provider community participates in a system that meets HUD's goals of having coordinated assessment for housing for all those experiencing homelessness in our community. It will be separate from the Homa system, but that is necessary for victims in order to maintain their safety and security, and it will be an amazing accomplishment when we meet it.
Mayor, council, we also want to focus on our youth and education. This is under the goal of raising public awareness and being a leader in prevention and early intervention. We all know that the best prevention is to start early, and that is to help our youth develop more healthy relationships. That's why we have focused on high school students through a variety of avenues, such as the three-town halls where we participated, and there were over 375 participants, the 15 resource fairs where we engaged over 12,000 students, and the training called In Their Shoes where we provided the training to over 1,600 students in the Phoenix Union High School District across five schools. We could not have done this without the great partnership with Phoenix Union where they actually infused the training into their curriculum. We also developed a Dating Violence and Awareness School Guide for schools to use in implementing these activities, that's also in your packet, so that they can grow their own capacity and gauge their own student body. Last year, we had great participation in the high schools, at high school football games, as they went purple. But this year, we really want to step up this whole idea, and so we've implemented Coaching Up. Coaching Up is a pilot program made possible by a funding collaboration with the Arizona Foundation for Women, the Arizona Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence, the McCain Institutes, and the NFL Foundation through a legacy grant. The program focuses on coaches and the role that they play in their student-athletes' lives in teaching them the values of respect, integrity, and teamwork. Ten schools across the state were awarded $1,000 grants each for training and activities, and we were fortunate enough to have three of them here in our city, Betty Fairfax, Central, and North Canyon High School. It is important to know, Mayor and council, that when we brought our 50-plus partners together at the onset, it became very apparent that community awareness and strong partnerships were going to be the key to moving our DV roadmap forward. We really focused, and that's why we really focused in the first two years, in raising awareness through the development of our Paint Phoenix Purple campaign. As an example, we want to thank you, Mayor and council, for all of your fantastic participation in creating the many, many public service announcements that we utilized. Another example of the city efforts is lighting the display of our Paint Phoenix Purple campaign through the convention center, the lighting of the Crown of City Hall, and Torreya Castle. Departments all across the city participate, as well as you with Mayor and council, everything from putting information into the city water bills to putting banners on all the solid waste trucks. And this year, we're going to partner with Valley Metro, and we're going to wrap a light-rail train, which is extremely exciting for this campaign. Lastly, Mayor and council, we want to talk about our strong partnerships. The goal here is to engage every level of the community to solve this problem. These are just a few examples. Arizona Federal Credit Union, who sponsors many of the efforts that I described in the youth and education area, as well as really having unprecedented Paint Phoenix Purple campaign every Friday through the wearing of purple. Mountain Park did trainings for all of their staff, they placed posters in all of their locations along with shoe carts. Circle K in the past two years have placed over 650 posters all across their restrooms and across Arizona. The partnership with our local sports teams has been great, and it continues to be very strong. Last year, the Cardinals raised $150,000 through the Cardinals Defense Against Domestic Violence campaign. The funding was given to the local providers. The Diamondbacks and the Suns hosted events last year, and they will continue to do so this year. And the mayor and council were invited to the wonderful NFL Unsung's Hero Awards Luncheon, recognizing the domestic violence service providers in our community. And lastly, Mayor and council, the power of this effort has been in the influence that has been brought to bear in our community, to other municipalities and to other units of government, including Maricopa County, who is now coloring the county, and the Governor's Office encouraging mayors from all cities to be part of lighting Arizona purple. The mission of the Domestic Violence Roadmap is to create a culture of change, as Deanna mentioned earlier, in how we talk about domestic violence in the community. And while we haven't finished yet, the campaign and the roadmap has absolutely started this community and this state on a path in which the culture shift is not only possible, it's actually beginning.
Mayor and council, this concludes our presentation. At this time, I'd like to afford an opportunity to Mr. Manos and Mr. Rader to provide brief comments on their efforts in the partnership.
Thank you, Deanna. Thank you, Mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I was with my board members this morning, and they asked me to extend their thanks for this invitation. When I look back over the past couple of years, I reflect on that the best things that we've done for this community, we've done together, not by ourselves. So we've worked on homelessness issues, we assembled the Fillmore property together, and I think that's going to be a wonderful project. Councilwoman Gallegos, we've worked on flood control issues. Mayor, we will be here October 30th on Opportunity for Youth, and with Mr. Zirker, we're developing a regional plan for workforce development. So my message is those things that we do for this community, we serve the community best when we do those together. This domestic violence issue is a great fit for Maricopa County. Maricopa County and the city of Phoenix have about the same number of employees, we have about the same-sized budget. What's unique about Maricopa County is we spend more than half of our budget on public safety and courts. Every day, we see the consequences of domestic violence, not only on the victims, but of their families. So we are very pleased, we're honored, we appreciate city staff's invitation. We will be a full participant. I can tell you, we are going to light up our building. That turned out to be a whole lot more expensive than I thought. I called our facilities director, and I told him to order about a half a dozen purple light bulbs, but I found out that's not what you need. But October 1st, our building will be lit up. And again, thank you for allowing us to participate in this great program.
Thank you. Is that on?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Stanton, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to present to you today on the Governor's Lighting Arizona Purple Initiative. I think I'd like to first thank the amazing staff at the city of Phoenix for serving as a wonderful collaborative partner for the state of Arizona on this issue, as well as the human trafficking. Your efforts truly are an inspiration for what we're doing at the state level. And through the governor's leadership, on October 1st, we'll be lighting the Capitol purple and launching our own statewide domestic violence campaign. So we're hoping that you'll all be able to come out and join us. We're pleased that Mayor Stanton will be able to join the governor onstage for that event, and we're really excited about the mile triangle that we'll have downtown with the state Capitol lit purple, as well as the county and the city buildings. We've also got word from the Cardinals that they'll be lighting University of Phoenix Stadium purple, at least for a short period before the Coman people make them change it to pink. So through the governor's office, we did send letters to all 92 mayors encouraging them, throughout the state of Arizona, encouraging them to participate in their own domestic violence campaign. We also are encouraging all of the executive agencies in the state to also join in and wear purple and provide materials to their employees and join in on the Domestic Violence and Lighting Arizona Purple campaign. So we're really excited, and then all Arizona citizens can also join this campaign by purchasing a purple light bulb at any Home Depot location throughout the state of Arizona. They'll be selling purple light bulbs, with a portion of the proceeds going to support domestic violence prevention. So we encourage everybody to stand with the city, stand with the state, and light their own homes purple, and that we do have a hashtag Lighting AZ Purple, because that's the real fun of it, you get to post the picture of your own home that's purple right alongside the state Capitol and the city buildings.
All right, excellent.
Mayor, members of the council, I do want to acknowledge you. We have with us today as well Presiding Chief Judge Don Taylor, who has been instrumental in our efforts with the court. And I'd also be remiss if I did not acknowledge Tamara Spindley, who actually keeps us all on track in making sure that we're moving our efforts forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Tom Manos, I really appreciate the county and your partnership on the variety of issues you mentioned, many more coming in this campaign. Thanks for being a partner. I do get a little mad, though, they beat us every year in the Bike to Work Challenge. So, I mean, we got to up our game. They always, yeah, we're going to get you this year, but we're together, at least on the issue of ending domestic violence, into the governor's office. Tell the governor, we do appreciate his leadership. When I found out they were going to light the Capitol purple, I asked Deanna, can we light all of City Hall purple? She said, there's no way we can afford that. We can only, we can do a light railcar, that's about it, but we got to one-up the governor's office. All right, any comments or questions by members of this council? It's a very serious subject, but we can have a little bit of fun as we work together to end domestic violence. And I love that idea of buying a purple light bulb to light up your house, or if you want to play a joke on your neighbor, light up your neighbor's house. What the heck? Councilman Malkowski.
You know, Mayor, I just really want to thank all my colleagues and all the nonprofits that came together to create this on roadmap. It was just incredible to see somebody's idea coming for help to keep a shelter open, that all this has happened, you know, from a roadmap to the whole central booking. I mean, that's incredible how you can use all the resources that are out there through Maricopa County and now throughout the whole state. Incredible. And Mayor, with your idea of lighting City Hall, now the county and the state's taking on that challenge. So incredible how just the power of one, of one organization, that what I call the Team Phoenix approach, has spread out to become the Team Maricopa County. Now it's the Team Arizona on domestic violence, and I think that's what it's all about. It's about working together and coming with solutions and giving people those tools at the workplace. Now employers have tools that they can hand out to their employees, and individuals have something in their hands that they can ask for help, or resources that they can call when they have a break or some free time, or they know that there's somebody there at work that can actually help them out with this domestic violence. The other thing is that human sex trafficking, it's incredible that we hear the testimonies of young ladies that are being kidnapped from their families, and some of them are forced into prostitution. It's really sad to hear their stories, and it's, what a great opportunity for us as a city, as a county, and as a state, to really end this awful human trafficking of young ladies and young men now, too. So it's just incredible to hear those stories, and I think it's stories that we have to repeat, we have to tell, so people know that as a father of six and young ones, that you need to take care of your kids when you're in the public. You need to make sure that you don't allow those little children to go to the restrooms without being escorted by an older brother or sister, or by a parent. I mean, there's just sad stories that we hear out there, and we need to educate the public about those bad things that are happening in our community. So thank you so much for being a part of this whole team. I guess now it's not just Team Phoenix, it's Team Arizona approach on domestic violence.
Thank you very much. Councilman DeCiccio?
Thank you, Mayor, and I too want to thank everybody for all their hard work. I mean, this really started several years ago, back in the 90s even, and then you were able to elevate it and make it even better with this roadmap towards success for domestic violence. And it's also an opportunity for us to talk about how great the successes were, but it's also a time for us to remember that we get close to 50,000 calls a year related to domestic violence. It's our number-one call that literally leads to some of the horrible things that happen in our community. And until every individual is protected, our job is not done. So I think it's fantastic we've been able to work through these types of issues, literally trying to find ways to make things work together, working with the county, working with the state. That's the only way that this thing will get solved. And the roadmap for success deals with ending domestic violence. In the past, the language was finding a way to stop it, or it was always very weak language. When it says ending domestic violence, that's very firm. That means everything is geared toward that. So I want to thank staff, I want to thank everyone for that. I do have a couple of questions, if I could. In the roadmap that we had, it was multiple pillars. And also, I want to give a lot of acknowledgement to Lucia Howard. I don't know if you remember the work that she put into this thing. I mean, that was a labor of love, getting it started, getting it kicked off, dedication, perseverance, when she had so many walls coming at her at the time, but that's one lady that never gives up. You know, matter of fact, I tell my children, my two girls, I tell them, I say, hey, look, never, ever give up in life. The person who gives up loses all the time, but she knows that already, Lucia does. But in respect to the roadmap, where are we with, you know, we had five pillars in there, where are we at, what are we still short on, and what do we need to get accomplished, and what do we need to do to get there?
Mayor, Councilwoman DeCiccio, members of the council, when we developed the roadmap initially, we put in goals for each year and what we were going to accomplish. I'm happy to report that we have met our first and second-year goals. We continue each year to reevaluate the plan as a collaborative. We look at the plan each year, determine what is still relevant, what we need to tweak, and if there's new things we need to add to it as a result of what's happening in our community. So it's very much working. As I said, we did accomplish the first and second-year goals, and we're moving forward now to work towards the third-year goals.
Mayor, may I ask you if you could publish what those third-year goals are, so we, as a council, know what those things are that we need to get accomplished and stay focused on?
Absolutely.
And thank you again for all your work, for everybody over there.
Thank you, Councilman. Other comments? Councilman Gallego?
Thank you so much. Thank you for your hard work on this. It's so wonderful, like, I was recently visiting a school in my district that participated in the campaign, and they shared stories of students seeing the information all the time, seeing the phone number, and finally saying, it's staring me in the face, I'm going to call it, and then leading to safety. So this really does change outcomes, and I'm glad that we are painting the city, the state, the county, purple, and thank you for your partnership. The more we reinforce the message, the more we can get more people to safety. So wonderful. I'm also very glad we're working with employers, because there's a lot of confusion about employers' responsibility, as well as what they can do if they want to step up and make this a commitment. So that really seems like one of the areas in which I expect us to have great outcomes. So wonderful work. Been talking with people in the community about what is still left to do, and one question I got is, right now, when there's a domestic violence situation between two parents, and there's a situation with transfer of custody, and there's a question about whether the parents should see each other during that transfer of custody, and sometimes people will go where there's a police presence or other places, but is there anything we can do to make sure we provide a safe place for parents to transfer custody?
Mayor, Councilwoman Gallego, members of the council, we are in current conversations with the county. We are identifying the key players to address that particular issue, and we are scheduling a meeting in October to talk about that exact situation.
Wonderful. Well, thank you to the county for stepping up to help us address that issue.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any other members of the council? Councilwoman Pastor?
I would like to thank you for working with the school district, because I think that's very important to get the word out, especially in the high schools. I would like to see also collaborative effort with the elementaries, and really looking at the elementary schools and building that momentum so that by the time at high school, they've already been aware and they're educated on what they need to do and to step forward. I think education is key, and information is key, and the dynamics of that is important. So, thank you, especially with the high schools, because Fairfax made sure it was purple. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Isn't it nice to have an item that literally, it seems like unanimous support from not just this city council, but across the state of Arizona, of course, our county, the governor's office. It's nice to talk about something that we could all agree on the topic itself, although, I mean, frankly, we have a lot of work to do, and I think we're doing it. It feels like we are, we're doing it, and I want to thank certainly our city staff. Deanna, thank you for mentioning Tamara, because I know that, you know... Deanna, thank you for mentioning Tamara, because I know that, you know, with your leadership, with so many people on your team, Mo being another one. Mr. Manos, thank you for being here and the partnership, collaboration, of course, with the state. I was at the Arizona League event about, I don't know, how long has it been? Six weeks maybe ago? And the governor's office was announcing this to the, to all of the cities and towns, and it was really exciting. And, but Ellie, I especially wanna thank you. You know, we are all part of government, I think, in these roles. And, you know, you're really teaching us something here, and I hope you feel supported. And I think, you know, that's where it starts, is people like yourself and it is people like Lucia Howard and so many others. So, thank you for your leadership on this. And, you know, what we'll, I love the idea of the, you know, we've all done the PSAs of the Paint Phoenix Purple, or the county, or the state, or however we need to do that. More importantly, it's about the actions and trying to educate people. And again, I think, I mean, you would better tell us, Ellie, but it feels like we're gaining ground. So much more work that has to be done, but it feels like it's certainly moving in a positive direction, so.
Yes, thank you so much. I appreciate that. And absolutely, I feel like we are gaining ground. We have made such tremendous progress in reaching so many more people than we've ever reached before and getting the message out. And now that it's statewide, I just feel like that message is gonna continue to grow. And, you know, our goal was to create a culture shift in how we talk about domestic violence, and I just see that happening everywhere we go. So, it's been really tremendous to have all the partnerships with both the private sector or the public sector, government, non-government businesses, the sports teams. I just think we're just really making tremendous progress. Yes.
All right, thanks, Vice Mayor. Other comments? Councilwoman Williams, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I too wanna thank you. I know how much you've gone through for all of this and how many purple articles you have written and worn. It's very exciting, and I know that we continue to go forward. I guess my question is, I know we got the grant to go to the high school. Have we submitted for another grant to expand into, I know, Lindell Union High School would like to have this program, as well as have we contacted ARP and done anything with them?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, members of the council, the grant that we received for the schools, we did develop the curriculum. That curriculum is with us, as well as the In Her Shoes that we purchased. We are able to take that curriculum and expand it to other schools as we develop partnerships throughout the city. So, we certainly can use a curriculum. If schools are interested, they can also purchase the curriculum as well, and we'll continue to seek grant opportunities to continue to expand our efforts.
Okay, 'cause I really would like to see it in all the high schools. And actually, the junior highs, I think it's important to put it there, too. And I don't wanna forget the senior committee, community. This is an area that needs resources and needs to be able to identify and is least likely to know where to go.
Yes, Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, members of the council, because of your guidance and efforts on that, we did create a brochure specifically for seniors, so that we would ensure that we're also bringing that awareness to all of our senior centers, if they're in a domestic violence situation, how they can seek services as well.
But, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Any other comments? All right, excellent, excellent report. What was mentioned before, it's really the coordination, government coordination, the nonprofit community coordinating together. We are working together like never before to try to end domestic violence in our city, our region, and our state. So, Ellie, I'm glad to hear you report that you feel that we're making great progress, that this, not just PR campaign, but substantive campaign in terms of reforms to our legal system, as well as heading in the right direction. So, thanks for all your partnership and look forward to seeing the Capitol turn purple on October 1st. That's gonna be fun. All right, thanks, everyone. Next item on our agenda, oh, I apologize. Ms. Barker, you are correct. She had a comment. Ms. Barker had a public comment on this item. Ms. Barker, up to two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilwoman Diane Barker, District 7. And I, like other people, support this cause to end domestic violence. I am for campaigns. I like to see our vice manager wear purple, if he's not wearing red for the Buckeyes. But, the thing is, is that I went to a public meeting that was posted, that was over in the courts, only to find out on the prosecutor's level, nobody knew what was going on. So, I wrote our Chief Judge Taylor a note, and I said, hey, I had to go through this x-ray system twice, Your Honor, and like this. Well, you know, in an hour, he gave me a phone call. What a personable judge. And then I ended up over in his office talking about it, but I wanted the background material, but this was a fatality, domestic violence out of the prosecutor's office. So, I found out that actually I wasn't privileged to that information, but this is a serious issue, and that's my point. It really is, and there are a lot of calls into the police department that revolve this situation. So, the awareness and the networking and what MAG has done for years and so forth, but past the gloss and the connectivity, we need to get to the cause, those cases that are unresolved, that we had for years here. You know, the city manager's got a big job to make sure that those cases are priority and that we resolve these cases and we get to the issue, because anybody that's been involved in conflicts, close with significant others and everything, it's very, very, very scary. And it's life-threatening, and we can't let this go through. And so, you know, on that, and also, they need services, you know, to get out of under who's threatening them and get on the bus. And that's what I wanted to say, the public transit gave my oath again. I have a few months left on my transit commission. It's my honor to monitor these monies, and I just question that when you transfer $16 million, now you are, before the new tax, that it's done right, because it shows here in the books that you've taken out of the bus and you've given to the light rail and other programs, and that's not what Transit 2000 was. And I am doing my job to my honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. One more speaker on this item. John Rusnick, did you wish to speak on item number two? Up to two minutes, good to see you.
I'm gonna speak on is that I was all in favor of domestic violence. We've gotta do something with the situation that we have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rusnick. That's all the public comment I have. So, thanks again for everyone for your partnership. Look forward to our continuing close working relationship. Next item on the agenda is item number three, in which our city manager and his budget team are gonna review with the council and the public, the 2014-15 actuals. The city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm gonna echo a phrase used by my colleague, Mr. Manos, and say, we've done our best work on the budget when we have worked together. Elected leadership and city employees have worked hard this year, and we want to report on their efforts and the results of that. Last year, you directed me to provide earlier and more regular updates on the city's budget status. And as a result, last September, we began developing solutions that we worked on together through the fall and spring for a successfully balanced budget for 2014-15. And we're continuing the direction this year. First, on this presentation, we'll take a look at how we did with the actuals for 14-15. Then we'll talk about where we stand today, three months into 15-16, and we'll finally take a look ahead at the challenges we must work on together for 15-16. Any discussion of a budget needs to take into account both the revenue and the expenditure side of the ledger. Any unplanned increases or shortfall in revenues or spending affects, or increase or shortfall in spending affects our fund balance, the third picture there, which is the money we have to start out the year. For 2014-15, the year that just ended last June, we have good news about our revenue projections and our tight controls on spending. The good news is welcome, since, as you remember, we are working to reduce a projected deficit for the 16-17 year, and every little bit that we accumulated through hard work last year is going to help us with that. So, here today is Budget and Research Director Jeff Barton, who will explain what our accurate revenue forecasts and our tight spending mean for us this year and into next. Jeff?
Mayor, members of the council, I wanna thank you for allowing us this opportunity today. We're really excited to be here to present last year's actual results with you. We're excited twofold. Number one, we overcame a lot of adversity last year as it pertained to our budget. We're also excited because what that means to us as we move forward for next year, as Ed mentioned, for 16-17, we feel that we've got momentum and a good jumping off point. So, what I wanna talk to you first, before we get into those details, I wanna first acknowledge that what I'm gonna talk to you about over the next couple of slides does not happen without the strong leadership in the direction of this council. It also doesn't happen without the hard work and sacrifice of our City of Phoenix employees, and I think that's always important to keep in front of us as we move forward. So, last year, I'm sure you all remember, we started the year off not in the greatest of sorts. We actually had to come to you early in last fiscal year, and we reduced our general fund revenue estimate by $15 million. It's luckily for us, 13-14 year, we ended on a positive note, and we had $18 million to cushion that blow. So, it didn't hit us as hard as it could have. By the time we made those revenue adjustments to 14-15, the economy started to cooperate with us in our projection. And so, by the year's end, our resources actually exceeded our revised revenue estimate by approximately $2.1 million. I wanna emphasize one point here. The large contributor to that increase over our revised estimate was fire, emergency transportation services revenue, or ETS revenue. I wanna caution everyone, because I don't, I want everyone to understand that that is not anticipated to continue as we move forward. In fact, we expect ETS revenue to decline in the current fiscal year primarily because of the legislative changes regarding access reimbursement rates at the state level. But, as you know, there's a silver lining in every cloud. So, last year, because of that revenue reduction of $15 million, as well as the direction from this body, we actually began a very strong collaboration and partnership with the University of Arizona to refine and hone our revenue estimates. Within that, what we now have access to with that collaboration, we now have access to local and national economists that understand better than we do the impact of certain individual indicators have on the local economy. And with that, we relied heavily on that relationship this fiscal year as we developed the budget for the current year revenue estimate. So, the other side of the equation, as Ed mentioned, we also have our expenditures. Just like we had adversity on the revenue side, we also had the same adversity on our expenditure side, and we're really excited about what we were able to achieve last fiscal year. So, we ended the year with $22.9 million worth of savings. That's almost $23 million, or a 2% variance from the revised revenue expenditure, or revised expenditure, I'm sorry. Largely, those savings come from vacancies. And I think that's really important to emphasize that we, last year was a record number of retirements within the city. Over 616 employees left the City of Phoenix to retirement last year, and we were able to continue to provide quality services without a dip in our performance levels and our metrics with that number of vacancies. So, those vacancies, what that meant is, over 50% of that $22.9 million came from salary savings, or savings in pay and benefits. But, those vacancies, the savings from those vacancies don't just stop at salary and benefit. As you know, our employees also touch many other things. They provide many services throughout this organization. And as a result, there are savings related, that are also related to those vacancies that fall in other areas other than salaries and benefits. As an example, last fiscal year, collectively, city staff drove approximately 200,000 fewer miles than they did the year before. And that, I did some research on that. When I look at vacancies and overlay that with where those reductions in mileage occurred, there is a strong correlation between where those vacancies were and where those savings were. Departments like streets and parks that do a lot of driving, you saw a significant number of, significant reduction in the savings, in mileage. Also, on top of that, with the fuel fluctuations last fiscal year, we also experienced additional savings. As a result of our vacancies, as a result of the underutilized vehicle sweep that we've been doing for past several years, our O&amp;M cost for vehicles saved us about $4 to $5 million last year. The third and final large contributor to last year's savings from an expenditure standpoint was e-procurement. As many of you know, we're revamping our purchasing process, and in that process, we implemented a new purchasing solution in SAP. The late-year implementation and going live with that project delayed some payments at year-end, and so it's possible that some of those payments may need to be rebudgeted in the current year. We're currently estimating that that impact could be anywhere from $5 to $7 million. But, over the next couple of months, my staff, the staff from finance, as well as departments, as we go through our technical review process to develop the current year estimate and the revised base budget next year, we'll figure that out. And it's hopeful for us that we think we can absorb most of that within the current year budget without having to carry it over. Again, I wanna emphasize that these savings are one-time in nature. So, those savings do not lend themselves to be there for, to extend or enhance programs and services on an ongoing basis. The next slide is really a graphical depiction of the first two things that we just talked about, our revenue and expenditures. So, you can see on the left-hand side, again, our revenues or our resources came in $2.1 million higher than what we estimated, and on the expense side, we came in $22.9 million lower than anticipated. So, what does that mean to us? That means we start this fiscal year with $25 million more in resources. We expected last fiscal year to end, with our ending balance to be $75 million, and instead, we're at $100 million. That's significant as we look forward, or as we look back. If you can recall, in February, when we presented to you the five-year forecast, we were anticipating a projected shortfall for fiscal year 16-17 of $58 to $31 million. That deficit was in large part due to the increases in PSPRS pension of $25 million. When we set aside that $25 million in one-time resources to be used for this purpose, it changes the picture a little bit. So, we increased our resources by $25 million, and as a result, we now can reduce that estimated projected deficit down to $33 to $6 million. That's something that we will address over the next coming months as we begin our technical review process and our base budget development process. So, what does that mean? As we look forward, again, the next couple of months are the fun time of year for BNR. It's the time where everyone in the city avoids us. We get on the elevator, people walk off, people turn their heads when they see us coming, because what we will do, my staff will do, we'll analyze every department's budget line by line. And so, we will go through and ask a series of questions that everyone hates to see coming. Why, 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 why? And so, we will drive down the current year budget to what we call the estimate. And that estimate will then allow, free up additional resources for next fiscal year. But, at this time, where we stand for the 15-16 budget, we don't anticipate, we don't anticipate any revenue reductions, nor do we estimate any, or any reductions in this current service levels. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Zirker.
Thank you, Jeff. So, as we look forward to 16-17 now, we see we got, or work cut out for us, but because of what we've done together, that work is starting to take shape into less of a deficit than we expected. But, the things we're working on this year with you for next year, we have, our biannual labor contracts will be negotiated this year to begin in 2016-17. We know that city employees have taken concessions in five of the last six years, so that's gonna be at issue as we negotiate with our labor groups. The next thing is continued tracking of actual revenue. As we've seen, the stock market has taken some fluctuations here in the last couple of months. That doesn't directly tie to our sales tax receipts, but it just speaks to the volatility of the economy, and so we need to do monthly tracking. And as you all have requested, we send you monthly sales tax receipt reports. So, we wanna keep our eyes on that. Already this year, we're about, after two months, about a half million behind on sales tax from where we had projected. There's plenty of time to make that up. That's not a huge number, but it's something that we have to keep looking at every month. The third thing, of course, as Jeff mentioned, is pension costs. And the mayor and the council and the voters have been working diligently on the COPERS piece of this. But, as Jeff said, we received an increase in our Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, or PSPRS, bill last year. We know what those numbers are for the next two years. We always continue to monitor our City of Phoenix Employee Retirement System for civilians. The COPERS Board continues to assess its experience study for its actuaries, so we gotta keep watching that. The next thing is ongoing maintenance and infrastructure. Proposition 104 was great news for our transportation infrastructure, and there's a lot of work going on there. We also keep our eye on our buildings, our IT needs, and all those things are part of that, and that's some demands. The fifth thing we have, of course, is continued demand for services. You hear that every time you're out in the community. We know libraries, arts, parks, police, fire, all those general fund services, there is continued demand for that. And we know that there's also continued demand for our internal services with finance and law and all those things we watch. And then the last variable for 16-17 that we'll be working on is how our primary and secondary property tax revenues are allocated. We have, we use primary property taxes for operating, we use secondary property taxes to service our debt, and we'll be talking this year about our current status with that as well as we move into the fall and the winter. as well as we move into the fall and the winter. As we prepare for 201617, again, the strategies, and none of these are new, we've been working with each council subcommittee actually, but the finance efficiency, particularly healthcare costs are one. Another one that we're working on, of course, is continue to examine any excess properties or leases that we have that aren't necessary. We've been to the subcommittees with many of these, and that we'll continue to do that. The most recent one we're taking a look at is the human resources building. Disposal of underused vehicles, as Jeff said, as we have reduced our employee count, we have a need for fewer vehicles, we need to continue to look at that. My message has been, there should be no such thing as an underused vehicle in the City of Phoenix. We either use it to its capacity, or we don't have it. So we don't have the luxury of extra vehicles. E-procurement, as that comes online, we think we're going to find ways that we can procure more efficiently and in larger quantities to get savings. And finally, of course, we wanted, as Jeff said, we're going to continue with our zero-based budget review and the continuous review of the overhead that causes people to turn around when Jeff walks down the hall and not catch his eye, because they're afraid of what he's going to say to them. But those are all seriously the things that we have to work on together as we now work towards the 201617 budget year. As we said, we are projecting right now, if we do nothing, we have a slight deficit to overcome, but we're not going to do nothing. As we did last year, we're all going to work hard on that every day, every week, every month. That's the task we're after. And with that, we do have one piece of business that we need to take action on, which is to talk about already, the 201617 budget calendar. That development starts after the first of the year, and Jeff will explain this.
And Mayor, members of the council, again, just by way of background, in order to comply with the city code and city charter, there are certain steps in the budget process that have to be done by a particular date and time, or a date designated by council. We, our history, our practice has always been to project, or put forward a budget calendar, and that calendar serves as that date designated by council. So what we ask from you today is to adopt the 1617 budget calendar. And with that, that's the end of our presentation.
All right. I guess I'll first ask if you have any questions from members of this council before seeing if there's a motion on the calendar issue. Any members of the council have any questions regarding the 201415 actuals? Councilman DeCiccio, please go jump right in.
Thank you, Mayor. One, just, I was on the record, two weeks ago, I believe it was, or three weeks ago, I believe our police officers need a pay raise. I mean, they haven't had one, but they've had the merit longevity over and above that. Merit longevity is just a bureaucratic name for a pay raise, but I believe that they need to have more than that, so you need to figure out how we're going to get to that number. And I think that there is a way to get there. And I had some caveats built into that as well. The other deals with the amount of revenue coming into the City of Phoenix. We're at $1.51 billion, I think is the projection we're going to have for next year. That is the most amount of money that the City of Phoenix has ever had when it comes to revenue, ever, in our history. Is that correct, Jeff?
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, yeah. Just to put a note on that, thank you for bringing that up. That is the highest amount of revenue in our history. If you go back to the most recent year where we had something close to that was actually seven years ago, and this year's budget is $15 million of revenue more than 2007, 2008. But what that indicates is this long recovery that we've gone through. It's taken us seven-plus years to regain that. And the other half of that, if we think about the other half of the equation of revenue is expenditures, at the same time, we've seen an increase in our pension and healthcare costs in that budget of $81 million. So we've had a little increase in revenue, but we have some expenses in there that are really putting stress on us. And so all this work that we are doing to maintain services while doing, while dealing with that reality has been really important. And again, as I would said before, that's why the pension reform that the council and the community have advocated for has been so important.
And Mayor, if I could throw out some numbers too. My understanding, you know, this was last year, we were right around $300 million in total retirement costs, healthcare costs, all combined. And that's growing at a clip of about $20 million a year, if not more than that. So that is something that is, if that's the number one expense that we have here, 300 million's a lot, that's every single year. And literally, we can break down where some of those expenses are, some of the things that, you know, as a council, we haven't dealt with, that we should be dealing with. And let me, if I could, for the viewing public and the people in the audience who are here, it doesn't matter whether you're on the right or the left, if you don't have your fiscal house in order, nothing matters. You're not going to have enough money for services, after-school programs, libraries, parks, or anything else, if you are not able to do that. And so what seems incongruent is you have all this money in the City of Phoenix, and I've got some ideas. I wouldn't do it without giving some ideas, but we've got all this money in the City of Phoenix, a lot more money than we've had, even though in 2007, we did have about $15 million less, but we also have approximately 3,000 to 4,000 employees less. So that doesn't jive. It doesn't sit well, because it doesn't make economic sense when you do that, when you look at those numbers. So the idea is, and if you look at what, how, a big part of the savings of the 22.9, I think it is, million dollars in savings approximately, 23, let's call it 23 million in savings, it was through vacancies, not filling that. I think it would just be a lot more upfront with the public if we were just to eliminate all those vacancies, then we have a real true figure of what our budget is. Then if you need additional employees, you're able to come back at a later date and fill those. Come to the council, we can authorize them if they're needed. But by doing that, you do multiple things. One, the public's able to see a budget, I believe would be completely balanced with a removal of those vacancies, at least part of it. Because I, you know, maybe that's going to be another 10 to 12 million of a projected, what, $23 million deficit approximately?
33 to 6. 6 million, right now, it would be somewhere between 6 and 30 million if we did nothing. But as I said, there's a lot we're going to do to address that.
And so what you end up having by doing that, by eliminating those vacancies, then it's one, it's more clear to the public. And I understand you need to be able to fill those, but then you can come to us on some of those specific areas, and then we, as a council, can make that determination whether or not we want to fill those. The other thing that it does is it allows not just the public and the council members to see what those numbers are, but it allows even the public sector unions to be able to see what those real numbers, what they perceive to be the real numbers to be. So that way, you're dealing with the numbers that everyone can see, okay, with the vacancies. That's one part of it. The second part of it deals with the amount that's already built in, and I think the public needs to understand this, when they talk about merit and longevity, that's already built into the budget, even though we have not approved it. It's because staff says that because we've done it in the past, it's going to be done that way in the future. I don't necessarily buy that, but approximately, if you include it's all in, it's about $17 million in additional pay raises that are built into this budget already, when you take a look at merit and longevity. Merit being basically a pay raise, longevity is, you know, what most people in the private sector would call a bonus. It's language that I wish we would be able to use the same language that the public is able to understand. Then if we're looking at that $6 million deficit, the other question I would have, and this is the last, you don't have to answer it today, but the speed of which we are selling the properties, the unused properties, I just haven't seen too much come across our desk in almost two years since we've been talking about it. There's got to be a faster way to handle that. I mean, that, one, that puts those properties on the tax rolls, and then, because you want that to be on the tax, right now, they're sitting vacant. But if you can find a way to expedite the sale of those properties, move them forward, whether it's the human resources building or the other ones, it's to everyone's best interest to do that. I think we've only had three properties, I think, in two years, and we've got a few thousand out there.
We've had three significant ones, but there's been lots of smaller parcels, particularly along the transit line. It's more than three, but we'll get, we'll get the full report.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, Councilman DeCiccio, I'd just say, talk about merit and longevity for a second and ask Jeff to explain the vacancies a little more. So the reason why merit and longevity are budgeted for is because they're contained in our labor agreements, and so those are obligations we have through our labor agreements. As we did last year, we'll split those out as we talk about the budget, to say what that is, but they're budgeted because of their presence in our labor agreements. They are an obligation that we have.
And as far as the vacant positions are concerned, for example, right now, we have about 600 roughly general fund vacancies. I'd say a quarter of those, if not more, are in the police department, which, right now, given where we are with hiring, a lot of those are support positions for police. So cutting those positions wouldn't probably be in the best interest of the city as we move forward for filling police officers. A lot of those are in lab, communications. And also on top of that, for example, I'll use communications again, last year, communications carried roughly 40 vacancies all year. And on top of that, they still have to provide a service. They still have to be there to answer the phone when you call 911. And so to do that, they use a lot of overtime. And so overtime was offset with those vacant positions. But the complexity and the nature of vacant positions changes on a daily basis, almost by hour. I mean, people exit and enter the city at a pretty rapid rate. So it'd be very difficult to cut all of those at one time, I think. What we've been doing, Councilman DeCiccio, in our, in our zero-based budget review, if you will, we've been taking a snapshot on a particular date and time, and any positions that start to approach a year old, those are the positions that we target, because we look at those positions as something that departments can, they've been able to provide a service without impacting service. So that's where we find the sweet spot, and that's something that we've now integrated into our annual ongoing budget process.
And that would come back to the council.
If I could follow up on that?
Please, Councilman, yeah.
Which you normally have in a situation, we carry what, between 10 and 15% vacancy, correct, on the actual number of employees?
Total employees, possibly.
Total. So that would be, and I get the general fund part with all the other funds that are in there, but you're talking anywhere between 1,200 and 1,500 potential vacancies that are out there. I don't think anybody up here is talking about cutting police. I mean, we're talking about adding police, so I don't think that would be it. But I think that it would be, you know, if you could do this and provide us a list, a snapshot of the type of vacancies that are out there right now, then we can take a look at that, and as a council, we can make that determination. What I'm trying to get at, and I get the one year, before it was two years, I think is what we looked at, if any position was open for two years, then we looked at that as a position probably not needing to be filled. If we're down to one year, I think that's fantastic. But I'd also like us to be able to categorize, if you could put together a list of where those vacancies are, what they are, and give us an idea what the value of those vacancies are by category. And the category probably come from each department. If you could do that, that would be great. That would just give us a good start.
Councilman, I think the issue is that you have to pick a date certain upon which to do that, because I think what Jeff is suggesting, that's a moving target on a day-by-day or minute-by-minute basis. Sounds like you support the policy of doing, looking at permanent cuts to vacant positions that are open more than a year.
I do support that, Mayor, and thank you for bringing that up.
What dates, you do support that?
Well, let's use my birthday. No, I'm just kidding. Just pick a date. It doesn't matter. Staff can pick any date that they want, they can give us an idea of how long that that's been vacant. It's just, pick a date in the past, let's say in the last month or so, because that makes it a lot easier, and give us an idea of how long those vacancies have been open, and then what type of positions they are, I mean, and what the value of those are by department. It's something that we should be able to do. And I get it, Mayor, thank you for pointing that out.
Do I do it on a monthly basis? Every six months? How often do you want to see the list?
No, I think it's just a one-time shot for right now, just to get a snapshot and a picture of what we have out there.
All right, so I don't know if it's possible to get Councilman DeCiccio a list of vacancies, I guess, I don't know if it's on his birthday or whatever. Well, I'm not, you know, I actually support the policy, I think it works very, very well. If you want to go in a different direction, that's fine, but maybe get Councilman DeCiccio pick a date certain, and then get him the, I guess, the vacancies at that, at that moment, because it's more than a day, it would have to be at a moment in time, right, because vacancies are coming and going, literally changing within a particular day because of the size of our organization.
They come and go unless they've been open for longer than six months or so. I mean, it'll give us an idea and a snap, like a poll. It's no different, it's a snapshot in time. Likewise, I think some of us would like to see what that snapshot in time is.
All right, I guess the best thing is to work directly with Councilman DeCiccio's office to figure out exactly the date, the snapshot that he would like to look at. If other council members want to pick a different snapshot, they can. I actually support the policy as suggested by Jeff, that it's about a year or so that's been vacant, then they make a recommendation about whether they want to permanently reduce, which is what we've done in the past. We've reduced a lot of positions in the city using that, that policy. It sounds like Councilman DeCiccio may want to go in a slightly different direction, so he'll, he can pick and choose the moment in time for the, for the vacancies to the best of our ability to get that to him. And then if other council members would like the same or a different moment in time, they could certainly get a different vacancy list. Vice Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to be sure that we, you know, we had a hiring freeze, obviously. We just talked about that. I just want to be sure that we're not waiting a year when some of these vacancies really should be filled like now. You know, obviously, and Jeff, I think you're doing a great job. I appreciate one of your opening lines and just reminding this council and reminding our viewers that these efficiencies are made on the, on the hard work of every city employee that we have, approximately 14,000 city employees. By the way, the leanest government we've had in about four decades. So we're doing more with less. When I hear that we are going, you know, 5 to 600, with 5 to 600 vacancies, my first thought is, you know, I mean, that's, that's putting a lot on already the leanest government that we've had in 40 years. Now, because of efficiencies, you know, we're able to do a lot more with less, and things are moving in the right direction, you know, but, I mean, our police department, our fire, our police officers have been taxed, you know, our firefighters have been taxed, and I can only imagine, you know, that's our number one priority. I can only imagine what, what it's been like for some of our other employees. So I just want to be sure that, that, you know, we have the resources needed, beginning with the people, to continue to deliver the best possible service to, to our customers, to the residents. Now, you know, as far as the timetable, you know, if that's the policy of the city, I just, I just want to be sure that we are not, you know, withholding opportunities to continue to fill some of these, these, these positions, to see how we can do over the next year, and then if everything works out, then we'll just go ahead and, and take those positions away.
I think what happened is that city manager in the past has tried to identify mission-critical positions, and we want to, you know, just because they happen to be vacant, we want to make sure those positions are there so they can be filled, prosecutor positions, police officer positions, et cetera. So it's been a judgment called by the city manager recommending to this council which position should be eliminated, and this council has, in my experience, always taken the advice of the city manager about elimination of vacant positions that are not, not mission-critical.
I understand, Mayor. In my experience, it's also been part, you know, part of the whole hiring freeze as well. And so...
And Vice Mayor, I'd just say, we don't have a hiring freeze, other than what we had with police based on the sales, special sales tax funds. But really, the vacancy rate right now is really a reflection of the large number of people who retired last year. So 600 people walk out the door. In the civil service system, you can't replace those people very fast, as you know. There's that, and so it's just the amount of time it takes to hire qualified people means that these positions stay vacant. And, you know, some of you might have the experience in your office where if a staff member gets another opportunity, they leave, it takes you a while to fill that job, you need that job, the other people pitch in for a little while, but two, three, four weeks, and then you get that other person in there. That gap of time adds up to salary savings. You multiply that across 14,300 people, that's where you start getting that. So there, there really are not, it's not as if 600 positions of the same positions are vacant.
Every day.
Every day. It's a constantly changing thing, and part of it is just the amount of time it takes us to hire people in the civil service system.
And one other thing I'd add to that, Ed, is that last year, for example, we talked about 600 people that retired. Within the general fund, there were only about 400 hires. So we couldn't even keep pace with the number of people that were exiting. So what departments find themselves doing are triaging their vacancies. They try to replace what just went out the door, because that was providing an immediate service at that point in time, and so those other positions, they get to them when they can. But again, it's a, it's a question for them, it's a triage situation. We have to kind of deal with what's there now and what, what's most important to us.
And I'm glad that that was clarified. I know that, you know, some people may be watching and thinking, well, why are we going without 600 vacancy, or, you know, 600 employees that we should have? And frankly, I wanted the clarification as well. So, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Other comments? Councilman Gates, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just following up on that line of questioning from Councilman DeCiccio earlier. So, my understanding is in these estimates, when you look at fiscal year 15, 16, and you say that, you know, somewhere between about six and, what was it, 30?
Thirty.
About 30 million. So, that does assume merit and longevity increases. What does that assume with respect to base salary?
I don't have the exact numbers, but what the estimates for the five-year forecast assume is the continuation of the existing labor contracts, assuming anything else would be an unfair labor practice on our part.
Okay, so, there's no base increase, no base decrease?
No.
At the same time? Okay. I really appreciated, Ed, your slide there with the different things that you're going to be focused on. The first one, healthcare, again, just to, can you give us all and for our viewers, an estimate of the healthcare costs moving forward in the next fiscal year? Is that going up or down?
With the work we've done with our existing employee groups on our healthcare options, we actually are projecting a decrease in healthcare premiums for employees, and the city pays 80% of that, by about 1.6%, so around 2% decrease through some changes in the plan and work we've done. I don't know if we've translated that exactly into budgetarily what the numbers are, but it should be a few million dollars that are going to be really important for that next year.
And again, I just want to congratulate you and the employee groups on that. I mean, I would imagine that if you polled employers in the city of Phoenix, there's not a lot of them who are saying that healthcare costs are going down for the next year. So, that's huge. On excess property, I appreciate Councilman DeCiccio's question on that. You know, we see a lot of those in my subcommittee, the Efficiency Subcommittee, where we're dealing with that. But, I think that's a good idea for the whole council to get a view of that. And obviously, you know, we want to do everything that we can to accelerate that as much as possible. We have, you know, run into some roadblocks on that. And, you know, one of the things is, when you're looking at selling excess property there, you have to balance the concerns of the neighbors and making sure that we have uses moving forward that are going to be positive for the community. Having said that, I agree with the spirit of Councilman DeCiccio's comments, that we need to continue to look for additional savings. Also, vehicles, I was happy to see that on there. Again, I agree, we should be, if there are vehicles that we aren't using, we shouldn't be using them additionally. I know that our, the fleet is pretty aged, and so, I would encourage you to look at additional ways to, how to fill that gap. And looking at creative approaches, including maybe looking at, you know, electric vehicles as a possibility would create a lot of savings on fuel. And, you know, additional creative ways to finance those purchases as well. So, I think that's something that can be positive and lead to savings moving forward. And finally, e-procurement, you know, that's something that I'm really looking forward to. I think that's going to be not only providing a lot better service to the city of Phoenix that we're getting, but I also am looking forward to significant savings out of that. So, thanks for the presentation. Look forward to this process moving forward. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. E-procurement has had some growing pains, as we've got to get used to how we do it. But, we feel comfortable that we're going to start identifying opportunities throughout the next year with that. So, yes, thank you.
Any other comments, Councilman Warren?
Thank you. So, on Slide 8, the updated general fund status, you got the deficit of the 6 to 33 million. And then, I guess you don't have a number on this one, but the variables, the, this one here?
Yes.
So, the difference between the 33 and the 6 is supposed to be a result of whatever happens on the bulletin board slide?
No, Councilman. The difference between the 33 and the 6 and the original 58, is that what you're referring to?
No.
No?
The 33 and the 6 is a range, so the gap is...
Well, the gap, it partially accounts for that, but also, remember the nature of the five-year forecast. There are all kinds of assumptions in there, in terms of cost increases for various contracts.
I was wondering, because it didn't seem like an all-inclusive list. I would certainly hope, you know, a couple of years, the estimates were just way off. But, what struck me when I went back and looked at it was it was also so far off compared to our sister cities just around the valley. They were predicting 0 to 3% growth, and we were at 7 and 1/2. And that really left all of us, I think, hanging, for sure. So, I hope, I know you got the economists from U of A, and that's great, but I hope you just kind of look and make sure our numbers make sense with what everybody else is predicting in our immediate area.
Councilman, if I may?
Oh, sure.
One of the things that we benefit from with that collaboration with the U of A is they have something that's called the State Forecast Project, where many other municipalities participate. And so, we do get to see how those other economy, or other municipalities are projecting their revenue.
Good, because it's hard to explain, you know, that we were projecting double what even the highest other ones were doing. Also, you know, how do you take into account something like the Fed's action last week with the interest rates? Obviously, people are interpreting that in the world. Stock market was way down today again. That if those guys who have access to not perfect information, but more information than all the rest of us put together, think things are kind of eh...
I think that's what the range...
You factor stuff like that in.
Yeah, I think that's what that range is reflecting. So, right, the range is because the revenue could be on a low side or a high side of an idea. And it builds in uncertainties, like what will the Fed do? And what was the stock market going to mean for people's confidence in spending? We've seen very strong vehicle sales in the last couple of years. Will that continue? And so, that range between 6 and 31 is reflecting, if people are more confident, the revenue's here. If people are less confident, the revenue's here. And so, that's where that band comes in in our projections, that far out in advance.
So, am I fair in saying the 33 is some kind of worst-case scenario? Because there's always a worst scenario. And it's being 6 million short, the best we can do?
Councilman, what that represents is the five-year forecast that was presented in February. Over the next couple of months, we'll go through our technical review process, and we anticipate that number coming down significantly. The thing you've got to remember...
I'm sorry, explain coming down. You mean, 33 million is coming down to something else?
So, remember, that forecast is a, sort of, the mayor's earlier comment, a point in time, assuming we didn't do anything. The economy just did what it did, and we spent what we projected, we'd be there. But, the point is, we're not going to do nothing. We're going to continue to work on these things. Look at vacancies, zero-based budget, continue to look at properties. All those things, they start chipping away at that number. And because we started now, last February, a year in advance, and now we're still six months in advance of when we have to make these decisions, we have the ability to just keep chipping away at that 6 to 31 range.
So, it's possible in another couple of months, we could be talking about being out of the red for next year.
Very possible.
It's possible. The one big variable on there, I think, is always what's going to happen with pension costs, because there are still some court decisions out there that haven't been adjudicated on the state's side. And so, what will they come in? And we'll know those in, what, December? They get set December, January, those get finalized for next year.
I would think the labor contracts, maybe you can just enlighten me, do you know, so, a 1% pay increase? What would that do?
I try not to do public math.
1% compensation is generally about 10 million.
Is that right, Tracy? About 10? About 10 million.
Tracy Reivers, our economist on staff here, so...
Okay, so, for every 1%?
1%, it's about 10 million to the general fund.
Right. All right.
Close.
Thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Tracy's not catching my eye. Is that close? Okay.
No, she's actually avoiding Jeff.
Right, that's true. That's true.
Everyone does. All right, thank you, Councilman. Any other comments or questions regarding 2014, 15 actuals? Councilman Pastore, please.
PSPRS, do we have an estimate of what that's going to cost us?
We don't have an updated number. That's what Ed was referring to. Around December, we'll get final numbers. But, in the five-year forecast, what is reflected in that number was an increase, an anticipated increase of $25 million to 1617.
And that also, well, that doesn't include COPERS.
It does not.
And what is COPERS?
Bear with me a second.
That's okay. So, we're anticipating it would be 25 million. What are we thinking it could be in December? This kind of guesstimate?
Again, I don't really know what the estimate's going to be. For right now, we're assuming it's the 25 million. Now, again, they're making some additional changes, and there's also additional pending litigation out there that could increase those costs. So, I think it's, it would be, for me to give you a number, Councilwoman, I don't think I'd be fair, comfortable giving you a number.
It'd be another 25 million?
I, again, I doubt that. I doubt that. I don't know. I mean, there is another lawsuit out there that could be just as big as the last one that we, that was settled. But, again, the timing as to when that actually gets implemented is questionable at this point in time. It still hasn't worked its way through the court system yet.
Okay.
As far as your question about COPERS, the five-year forecast assumed an increase in 1617 for civilian pension of about $3 million.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilman, go ahead. I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
I think you want to make a motion on the calendar issue, which is the one piece of business we have to vote upon today. Go ahead, Councilman.
And I do want to add into this PSPRS. I know there's a lot of potential legislation going to be coming down next year. Again, you know, it's not fair for us to be pointing at the state, because it is within our control of whether or not we're going to make those payments. I have been a fan and do believe that we do need to step up those payments. Here's what ends up happening. Right now, we're at about 37% funded. Is that approximately where we're at on PSPRS? 36, 37?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
It's a low number. You know, basically, with that, it's like 63% unfunded, which means we don't have the monies to do that, or it's not in the plan. You do need to step that up, especially for those individuals that may have already retired or planning on retiring. If we do have extra funds, we should be paying that down. It's no different than a credit card that's gone, you know, out of control. If you start paying down that principal balance as much as possible with extra dollars, one, it assures the police officers and firefighters that are under that system that they're going to have some stability. You know, by not, and I'm just giving a thought out here to the council and others, by not paying that thing down, we created, you know, we, on this side here, not the other side, but we end up creating an instability in that system. So, by delaying the payments or doing all these other things that we've been doing, and I understand the reasons why, we don't have to agree with it, but I do understand it, is that it creates more instability long-term. And then, the drastic measures have to occur. You know, if we don't address those things and deal with it upfront, and sometimes that means you have to make those payments. You have to do things you don't want to have to do. So, it's just something to think about, Mayor and others. It's that, it's not the state's obligation, it's not on that side, it's on this side here, that we can make logical decisions in order to make those kind of payments. And you'll ask why and how.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Gallego.
Thank you to staff for proposing our continued commitment to a very public and transparent budget process with community involvement. I move adoption of the 2016-17 budget calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the proposed, the staff-proposed budget calendar for next fiscal year budget process. Any comments or questions on that issue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Next item on the agenda is international economic development progress. Mr. City Manager, I know we'll have our economic development team and others here to present on this item, so I'll let you introduce, who's going to be introduced to present this item.
Thank you, Mayor. Sort of as we alluded to in the last item, the other side of this whole budget question is the economy and how the economy does. And you and the council have made a priority for specifically international economic development. Here today is our Deputy City Manager, Paul Blue, along with Community Economic Development Director Christine Mackey, and Assistant Economic Development Director Hank Marshall. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Blue.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you for an opportunity to share with you today the progress that we are making in international economic development. Across the last couple of years, and particularly last year, the city council has made significant and consequential commitments to pursue international economic development on a variety of fronts. And Chris will talk today about what we've been doing in Mexico, what we've been doing in Canada. In some ways, big, and then, there's always lots of things that are the small details that help make our pursuit of jobs related to international trade possible. And so, with that, I'm going to have, turn it over to Chris and ask her to give the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're here today to give you an overview and update on our international strategy. Under the direction of this mayor and council, we have really been focusing on activities relating to that international strategy. I think it's really important to note, too, that this city does have an international policy, and it does guide its own international policy, and is one of the few cities that actually does that. We are working on our conveniences of commerce for our own companies, on their exports, in actually moving the needle forward. You know, as an economic developer, it's not something you get to work on frequently on an international policy and how that strategy works. So, it's something I think we'd like to see our other cities work on with us and kind of take that leadership role. And in fact, the mayor will be leading a delegation of other Arizona mayors into Mexico here in October. So, we're looking forward to that and being able to provide them some guidance on activities and how to move forward. During the mayor's State of the City address, he made a very bold proclamation, and that was that he wanted Phoenix to be able to double its exports to Mexico by 2020 and double all international exports by 2025. That goal has been added to our international concept that is guided by this council, so we are working towards those efforts. The programs that we've put in place under your leadership are starting to affect that Exports are tracking favorably year over year. We've implemented educational programs that are helping our companies discover opportunities that you're going to hear a little bit more about in just a moment. At this council's direction, we've created a strong international press strategy. You'll remember that you funded an opportunity for us late last year, and we saw significant international press activity out of that, out of that motion with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. So, we saw a number of stories placed. Exports are growing in global markets. Phoenix is taking a leadership role in that. For reference for you, when we talk about our exports, metropolitan Phoenix is 68% of the exports that we're going to talk about. Where they don't drill down specifically to Phoenix, metropolitan Phoenix is 68% of those exports. Arizona exports are up, over 12.5%, where the U.S. on total is up about 2.7%. Arizona 2014 exports, for the first time, surpassed $20 billion. Our trade with Mexico is up 22%. And in Arizona, we have nearly 7,500 companies creating 93,000 jobs relating to exports. And these are traditionally pretty high-wage jobs. You can see Arizona's growth, you see Arizona's growth here on the right-hand side. And we've seen a nearly 41% increase in trade with Mexico. Where we're at in year-to-date 2015, we see Arizona up more than 12%, while the U.S. has fallen over 5% in its trade activity. Our exports to Mexico are up more than 19%. And why are we seeing such an increase in exports in Arizona? Of course, it's the creation of Export Tech, which is a great program that we'll talk about here in just a moment, and some of the great activities that are coming out of that. We've seen the National Export Initiative, which was brought forward in 2010, and then revamped into NEI NEXT in 2014, that gives us some tools and some guidance to be able to help our international companies disseminate information. But, also on that front, foreign direct investment is up due to EB5. So, we've seen billions of dollars invested in the United States since 2008, and that So we've seen billions of dollars invested in the United States since 2008, and that investment is no stranger to Arizona as well. We have several projects that we have worked on, most recently, of course, as you know, the Lourdes Tower, that's here in downtown with, with Marriott and the Courtyard moving forward. That is an EB5 investment, as is Wellness Springs, which will create, and I'll do a ribbon-cutting here a little bit later this year. I think what is important to note, though, I do want to urge some caution, we could see some volatility in the commodities markets moving forward, so I don't want to set a false stage that year over year, we're going to continue to see this increase, because we are subject to those commodity markets. We look at Export Tech, which we talked about just a moment ago. It launched here in Phoenix earlier this year. We held our first cohort. It's part of a nationally-recognized program that's supported by the federal government that helps our younger companies, and even more mature companies, discover what it's like to export in the market. Here you see Export Tech, our very first Export Tech in February. We had seven companies who went through that, that program, five of which are now exporting with Mexico. And here you see Mayor Stanton kicking off that, that very first program that we had. One of our graduates of Export Tech is Exos. Exos is a health sports training facility on a global scale, so they're working on training global international athletes, China and Mexico, and our own, but they're also working with companies like Porsche to train their, help train their own workforce in physical fitness, and healthiness, and well-being. And we are working with Exos, leading them through the process of becoming a federally-recognized export, export company, and are looking forward to bringing those results to you as well. In October of 2015, two of our companies will be going with us to Mexico, and that is Pinnacle Transplant and Exos. We've seen dibble engineering, or moving with market introductions into foreign markets. CAFCO will be attending the 2015 Mining Show in Mexico to receive some additional opportunities. Pegasus, we are assisting them with their Mexico activity, and Border, which is a construction company in Councilwoman Gallego's district that she's worked closely with, and we are working with them on their Mexico trade interests and helping them move forward. Export Tech 2.0 started last Friday, and you see the eight companies in front of you. Well, eight companies may seem like a small number of companies, that's actually as many as we can take into the program. This session, we had a waitlist and had to turn a number of companies away, so we already know we've got our next one ready for next year, when we do those two cohorts. So these are companies of all disciplines and all ranges that we're helping lead through that export program, and Hank Marshall really is the leadership behind that program and in taking that forward. Working on our Metro Export Alliance with the Greater Phoenix Economic Council, MPEXA is really gaining traction as the regional economic playbook for Arizona. It was launched earlier this year with Mayor Stanton as a co-chair, and is part of the Regional Alliance to Broaden Exports in our market. We'll go in a little more detail on our, our international activities now, and although we are working on a completely global basis, our predominant activities are done with Canada and with Mexico, and Phoenix is really thought of the, as the place to connect the Americas. We're a place that's early, easy connectivity and easy movement for these two leaders. Over the next few slides, we'll go into those details of what we're doing in those markets. So of course, our Mexico City office, I think we're all incredibly proud of that office and what it's doing. Our Mexico City office has just reached its one-year anniversary, and we're already seeing activity growing. The office was established to export, to increase exports from Phoenix to companies in Mexico, and elevate Phoenix's brand, and to attract foreign direct investment. And through our Mexico Trade Office, and through our wonderful partner in Malera Alvarez, we've conducted twelve bilateral trade missions during this past year, including the World Economic Forum, where Mayor Stanton was a presenter. Through the Mexico Trade Office, our Mexico Trade Representative has attended twenty trade shows to represent Phoenix. They include the Competitiveness in Manufacturing, the Economist Mexico Summit, Mexico Now Energy, Infrastructure Summit, the Aerospace Fair, and Select USA Roadshow. Our Mexico City office is continuing our outreach in partnership with Economic Development and Hank Marshall. They've identified diverse goods and service industries, from aerospace to biosciences, life sciences, and utilities. As in the United States, different regions, which we'll talk about in just a moment, do focus on other areas. So it's important to note that our Mexico City office isn't limited to Mexico City. It is focusing on activity across the country. Of course, with Councilman Noakowski, we have Hermosillo and his leadership in that market, where we focus on aerospace and supply chain, advanced manufacturing, and really innovation. Guadalajara, which is more technology and biotechnology-focused. Opportunities in Monterrey, which are high-tech, our university exchanges, and innovation in technology, and of course, Mexico City, which is aerospace, innovation, and high-technology. We look at our, our activity out of our Mexico Trade Office, we have seen our export leads and prospects move forward quickly this year, in dispersing our Phoenix's hot information, our demographic data, and our metric data into the Mexico office. As a result, we've seen forty-two direct prospects come out of our Mexico Trade Office that Hank, Malera Alvarez, and our team are working closely with to see where those opportunities might go. We expect to see even more during the coming years. So over this year, we've really gotten our feet wet and moved forward. Our Mexico Trade Representative is busy computing and analyzing the data necessary for opportunities to move forward. I think important to all of us are the technology and incubator innovation opportunities out of Mexico. Our Mexico Trade Office has created relationships with a number of public and private universities, incubators, innovators, and technology opportunities. Our Phoenix, Mexico Trade Office has been working closely with TACPA, Startup Mexico, NACE, Incubadoro, I can always, I stumble over that one, the Agave Labs, Tech Day Monterrey, Centro de Software, and Impulsa, to name a few. The City of Phoenix hosted Startup Mexico, which I know a number of you attended with us during this year, which brought eight of our technology incubator partners in from Mexico to experience what we were doing here in Phoenix. We're going to be hosting Startup Mexico again this year. In fact, I think it takes place this Friday, and we expect to see a number of additional, and even more innovative companies come in with us this week. I think we were all incredibly excited to see the announcement last week with ProMexico announcing its Phoenix office, and that we had been selected as their newest location. This mayor and council worked diligently to secure ProMexico, along with the council general, and we're looking forward to working with ProMexico, and working with our companies, and helping our companies move into Mexico to do business, and bringing Mexico companies into, into Arizona to do business. Of course, Canada is also a strong international partner of ours, and our relationship through our own, our Canada-Arizona Business Council, led by Glenn Williamson, has created, and Glenn has created a number of strategic opportunities and financial partnerships for us as well, that we are now investigating and moving forward. And not only we're working with, with companies from Canada like DIRTT, like BMO Harris, Epcor, Leclerc Foods, Astantech Consulting, RBC Wealth Management, and Old School Motorcycle, but we're working with high-net-worth individuals and high-net-worth groups to look at strategic investments and strategic capital placements in our market. We have a number of upcoming inbound and outbound sales missions into Canada to really share the Phoenix's hot message, and drive more investment and more companies into our core economic development opportunities. MAG, of course, is an incredibly strong partner of ours in our international activities. This year, MAG created a database to catalog information of our international companies, and, and database information about those companies in the region. Building an international export network is something that we didn't have before. We kind of knew the depth of our international companies. We would go on retention-expansion visits, we would learn anecdotally about that information, but MAG has really cataloged and led us in a direction that will help us on, as we're on our retention-expansion visits, to provide services to the international companies, but to use their platform to recruit new and additional companies from those sectors into our marketplace. So we're looking forward to continuing to investigate MAG's data and information that they've gathered for us. From that data, what we found is Arizona companies are from fifty countries, more than twenty-five-hundred businesses, and eighty-five-thousand jobs are here in Arizona directly because of our existing international relationships. I think we were all pretty impressed with the depth of that. Of course, Canada leads the way in the number of jobs that are in the market from our international partners. What's next? Continued support to Export Tech. You'll see the program that started this past week, but then you'll see two additional cohorts in 2016. We'll continue to support the rollout of MPEXA with GPEC, and with other thought leaders in the region to continue to move forward that international playbook. We'll continue to support and brag about the success of our companies in Phoenix export. Nothing works better in moving our activities and our needle forward more than positive stories about our companies that are exporting in this market, and our trade missions, and moving forward, and our great relationships with Canada and Mexico. Speaking of Mexico, we'll continue our outreach into other cities and into the region, and work with our Trade Office to identify other areas that we should be focusing on within the Mexico market. Continued collaboration, and new collaboration with ProMexico, to drive opportunities here, and foster relationships and trade missions, not only in the specific cities we've identified in Mexico and Canada, but globally as well. What are we going to, what are we focusing on in Canada? Of course, our continued collaboration with the Canada-Arizona Business Council, which again is a great relationship with a good leader in Glenn Williamson. Strategic business missions, which you'll see a number of those continuing this fall. Strong focus on foreign direct investment, and really utilizing that data, especially on those Canadian companies, how we can mine new companies and new activity coming into Arizona. Our targeted business retention-expansion visit, Hank Marshall in partnership with Kevin O'Shea at the, at the Arizona Commerce Authority, specifically go out on business retention-expansion visits with our international partners and to our international companies. GPEC, our Greater Phoenix Economic Council, is a strong partner on those visits as well. Hank participates in Select USA, which brings leaders from all over the world who are looking for investments or placements of investments into specific markets where you can, we jokingly call it speed dating, with a number of countries and companies from around the globe, and are able to visit dozens of companies in one location instead of having to visit with them, and fully launching how Phoenix can connect the Americas and identifying that brand moving forward. You know, I think one of the things that I thought was pretty interesting in August in the Business Journal, is they actually, there was an article that appeared, and it quoted, and I'll quote directly from them, "Mayors are the ones who are providing economic development leadership in cities where economic development is taking place." And I think what's so important about that, particularly in international activities, that is such a true statement. This mayor and this council are the ones who are really paving the way. Not many cities are doing the outreach, are doing the activities that this mayor and council are doing. You're not just directing staff to do that, you are on those sales missions with us. You are meeting with those companies, you are giving us that guidance, and through our city manager's office, we are able to execute your strategy. So we are just getting started, we're a year into that program, and with that, I would be happy to take any questions you might have.
All right, thank you very much for that excellent and thorough report. I'll just say for any of the council members that we don't have a choice. If you want to be a leading city and, and advance your economy, you have to be more involved in international affairs, particularly as it relates to Mexico here in Phoenix, Arizona. We don't have a choice. It's about our economy, it's about creating jobs here locally, and, you know, yes, it's outside the normal realm that cities have been involved in. Normally, international affairs would be done at the state level or, or at the federal level, but in our case, we had to grab the bull by the horns. Councilman Noakowski's been heading down to Mexico, Hermosillo, and Mexico City for a long period of, of time, and he and I have partnered together, and obviously, seeing it pay off significantly, it's going to continue to pay off, and we shouldn't, in any regard, rear back. We should continue full throttle, if you will, in this regard. It'll become an increasingly important part of our local economy. Some of our competitor cities and regions are ahead of us, and we're going to catch up. Councilman Noakowski? You have, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you, Mayor. And again, following up with what Chris had just talked about, too, this could not have been done if it wasn't for the mayor, Mayor Stanton, and Councilman Noakowski and the amount of work. I mean, I think you've been there, what, thirteen times, Mayor? At least thirteen times? That's a lot.
The various places, yeah.
Yeah, and so what you've got on something like that is you've got to focus, and the only way, you know, you can't go visit somebody one time and say you've done your job, it doesn't work that way. It takes a continued focus in order to do that, and if you look at what's been accomplished, not even just been accomplished, or what the path is right now, it's a good path for us to be in. And one of the things the mayor brought up, too, is, you know, it's kind of outside the realm, but if you're looking for a diversified economy and an opening of a market, you have to do those things, because really, that's where it's at. I mean, you could sell your goods down the street, logical to do that, but again, like any other market, if you're going to grow, if you're going to expand, if you're going to be in a place where, you know, you're going to be able to handle the ups and downs of a capital market, you've got to be able to diversify into other areas, too. And I think that that's what this does here with that. I think when we talk about ProMexico, it's better for us to be able to tell the public what that means. ProMexico is the economic development arm, which means if we are looking for foreign direct investment, that is the entity that would be helping guide that from Mexico. Now, I saw in the chart, too, I was a little surprised that it was that far down when it came down to jobs, but then when you start looking and breaking it down, like if you look at Great Britain, I think that was number two on our list with jobs, a lot of that has to do with the fact that you have British Airways here, and you're able to do your export. I mean, I don't think people can really look at and not understand the importance of these non-stop flights, not just direct, but non-stop flights to these other countries, because not only they carry people there that can go back and forth to jobs, but they also carry exported goods. I think one of the largest, if I remember correctly, one of the largest export that we come on British Airways, I think, is lettuce, you know, and vegetables that come from the Yuma area. So they're able to go in the hull of an airplane, and then they're sent over there. So it brings in not only dollars to our economy, but it also brings in jobs, because someone's got to do all that, right? So when you look at that, that's, a lot of it has to deal with also the impact of the airlines. And I know that we're looking constantly, and I see Paul over here, increasing our flights into Mexico. And Councilman Noakowski, do we have Hermosillo yet? Is that, I know that was there, is that still there or not? Tell me what's going on with that, because...
Coming in a couple weeks.
Yeah. Oh, really? Okay, well, I didn't mean to break anything that I didn't know about. It was just a question, because I didn't know about that. But one of the things with Councilman Noakowski's is connections down there with Mexico are critical, and Mayor Stanton's connections with Mexico are critical. To use the assets that you have over here, because government officials like to talk to same levels across the board. Not that anyone is at a different level in importance, it's just that there is a comfort level there, and then if they see an elected official going there, they think that that's important enough for them to be able to direct their staff. The last thing, well, that's good enough, right there. You know, congratulations for all the work that you're doing down there. Congratulations to the two individuals up here for helping put this thing together, making it work, and continue on the diligence path that you're on. Chris, you're doing an amazing job. I just have to tell you that right off the bat. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Gallego?
Thank you. Joined Councilman DeCiccio in thanking the mayor for being bold on trying to expand exports, and Councilman Noakowski for setting us a great example of how to use Sister City and other program to really invest in a community. We were investing post-1070, when a lot of other levels of Arizona government were not going to Mexico, and it seems like maybe it's a theme of today's meeting. We started painting Phoenix purple, then the whole state wanted to go purple, and we really started investing, along with our friends in Tucson, in the relationship with Mexico, and now we have great support from elected officials at the state level, so glad to see Phoenix lead. I also think Sister Cities, we can do what we did in, in Mexico with more cities, and I'm personally excited the city's going to be focusing on cybersecurity, and have the pleasure of represent, or being the council lead on our Sister City relationship in Israel, which is also doing amazing things on cybersecurity, and we have so much in common with Israel from climate to the, the areas where we really excel in our economy. It's been wonderful to see ASU invest in Israel, and they just announced a great partnership with Ben Gurion, and, and have several others that can also help with the ecosystem we're trying to create, so that will be an area of focus for me. I would also love to see us invest in more ties with India. So many of the entrepreneurs in my district, and I suspect many others, come to us from India, and I think there's a lot more we can do to take advantage of that great relationship, so I don't know if we can get a Sister City wish list, but that would be on mine, as, and I see some nodding among compatriots, so perhaps on others as well. Also had the opportunity to join a group of people in the economic development world to head to DC for an international development-focused track, and heard a lot of feedback about, from our delegation, that they really appreciate the city has investment in customs in our federal agenda. We were, Chris Mackey and I were at an aerospace company in District Eight recently, and they said, on occasion, the wait at Sky Harbor is nine days to get product into our community, so it sounds like it, it needs to stay in our economic development agenda to get more investment in customs. We, we often talk about border crossings, but the city probably has a more direct relationship at Sky Harbor, and maybe we can continue to make that a priority, and, and we have bipartisan support from our delegation on that partnership. So great news there, and thank you so much for your investments in international economic development.
Thank you for those comments, Councilman. I think what they were nodding is because our friends at ASU has helped provide some guidance to us in terms of if we want to really utilize Sister Cities more towards an economic development program, which I think is a consistent direction this council has given to our professional staff, where would, if we're going to grow Sister Cities, where would the logical step be? And they did identify cities in India at the top of that, at the top of that list. So I think economic development partnering with Sister Cities, I, you know, if I were to predict, I think it's the direction we're, we're, we're going, and I think you're right on. Other comments by members of this council regarding this report? No, it's not an action item, but on international economic development. Vice Mayor.
I echo all the great comments. I appreciate the focus on the entrepreneurial space. The Startup Mexico event was a great time. Mayor, you and I hosted a roundtable at the Office Plow last year, and I have to tell you, that is certainly a conversation with, that has a give and take, because there's so much talent there. And, and as we go around the room, and, and as we listen to these entrepreneurs and what they are doing, very, very impressive, and of course, I'm proud of the entrepreneurs that we have right here in Phoenix, who have some of the greatest talent right here in Phoenix. So I do appreciate all of the effort, the, the airlines, and of course, you know, everything else that, that we are doing. I think the foundation, in fact, I know that the foundation of economic development is... I think the foundation, in fact, I know that the foundation of economic development is the entrepreneur. It is that entrepreneurial space. And it makes sense locally. It makes sense nationally, and it certainly makes sense with this type of an approach as well, the international approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have to run to make sure I get an appointment by 5:00, so I'm going to hand these cards over to the vice mayor to take over the meeting. I did want to echo also that, in my experience, our consultant team's doing a great job in this. Malera Alvarez, James Allers, as I see in the audience. Mark Jemberman was recently hired over there from the Arizona-Mexico Commission. And their professional support and contacts have been invaluable to get us to this point. So I just want to publicly say thank you for your professional help. Councilman Noakowski, and then I have to run.
You know, Mayor, I want to thank our staff and also yourself for telling our story. That's basically what we go overseas and we just basically tell our story, the Phoenix story, in that we're open for business and there's opportunities on both sides of the border. And it's just incredible. When you sit around a table and you have a conversation, and no matter if SB 1070 is going on, or you have Sheriff Joe's incident, or Russell Pierce, we were able to sit around a table and tell the Phoenix story and invite people, invite people to our city and allow them to understand that we are open for business. And I just really want to thank the leadership of our mayor for, I mean, we were invited to on the floor of Congress. I mean, here in the United States, we don't have that privilege. And over there in Mexico, they took us down and they were in a session and they actually thanked us for coming down on the floor of the Congress. So it's just incredible, the opportunities, the friendships that we've built. And I do agree that the Sister Cities is a great opportunity for us to open up doors of economic development. And I really think we need to sit down and really figure out how economic development and Sister Cities go hand in hand, and how can we use the rest of my council members here, my colleagues, to really go out to other countries and other Sister Cities that we have throughout the world and just build those relationships and bring those businesses to Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
I would like to explore in the health industry, especially in the research industry, and look at that at some of our Sister Cities, some of the countries that are doing some best practices. I am particular, aware of areas in Israel that research is being done and how we could look at that and bring some of those best practices and industries to Arizona since it's science-based. We're looking at technology and all the other areas, but I think we need to look at our science hub and our health corridor also.
We'll make note of that. Thank you.
Great suggestion. Okay, hearing no other comments or questions, you don't need an action for this, correct?
No, this was for information only.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Yeah, we do have two cards. Stefan Frigia, did I say that correct? Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Stefan Frigia, based based in international business development with the GPEC. First of all, you know, I'd like to congratulate, you know, this council and the mayor for the leadership and support of GPEC and especially in activities related to international business development. The report that Christine gave today is stellar. The last few years have been, have shown tremendous growth in activities, both on the export side with the, now with the Export Tech programs, but also in the FDI. I'll just remind everyone that less than ten years ago, GPEC's pipeline, international FDI, was less than 1%. Today, we stand at about 22%. This is tremendous. You know, this year, we started with a very strong year already above forecast, and we expect surpass activity of previous year. But no, this would occur without your support, your leadership, and the close partnership with the city of Phoenix, you know, economic development department. Because together, we are able to execute a variety of items and strategies, you know, from communication internationally and domestically, but also to missions. For example, you know, we talked about Canada. We have three trips planned within GPEC in Canada. One in October, one in November, both in Toronto, then Calgary in the spring, and potentially even Montreal in May. We're also talking about India, leveraging, you know, Hank's work with Sister City Program and as well the interest from Arizona State University and Thunderbird to basically leverage their university relationship in that country. And the idea is to combine both education component, tourism, and economic development in a single trip. That's in the works as well. But just like we talked before, Mexico is also a key objective of GPEC and Europe because we do see a lot of activity come out of Europe. Specifically, you know, we're going in London, you know, for financial technology sector and Hanover. Hanover, Mass, we're discussing that again because it is the largest trade export event in the world. And we are encouraging right now companies in Arizona to participate and basically win contracts and export, and then of course, expand and grow jobs in here in Arizona. So both go hand in hand on the both sides of trade and business development and attraction. And again, I want to thank you for your support on international activity. Thank you for support of GPEC.
Thank you, sir. I'm Vice Mayor.
Just to comment on that, we have, when we go on these delegations, I mean, we have individuals from GPEC, we have individuals from the Hispanic Chamber, representing the Greater Phoenix Chamber, the Arizona Chamber. So we have a great delegation of business leaders that can actually tell the true Phoenix and Arizona story. So I think that's really important, that all that leadership is coming together, representing our city and our state. So thank you for being a part of that.
Great. And finally, Diane Barker, who is not here, correct? Okay.
She's from District Seven. You've got to remember that.
Sorry?
She is from District Seven.
She is from District Seven. All right, meeting is adjourned.